It is 6:15 PM on April 21st and we are going to call to order the library board meeting. We could have roll call, please.
Coffee. Bledsoe?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams? For them.
Here.
We have a quorum. The first item on, if we could have Brett do the implication, please? Skip right over that one.
Father, we love you and we thank you for the opportunity to come and do the city's business today. We ask you for wisdom and guidance. We ask you, Holy Spirit, to lead our thoughts and directions and things we say. Thank you, Father, for us to be able to make great decisions and honor you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, item number one is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
For them.
Yes.
Okay, do we have any comments for the library board? And item number five, presentation of the oral quarterly report on library usage and statistics on Perry Carnegie Library, by Anne Ray.
So, the Library Progress Club coffee went smoothly. I appreciate the volunteers who worked on mailing labels for invitations and all who prepared food and drinks for the fundraiser. Sharon Cartwright wrote an article for the Perry Daily Journal to promote the fundraiser. And we advertised the coffee on the front page of the city newsletter as well as on the back page in library events. We so appreciate all the generous donations that fund projects at the library. The Progress Club has voted to fund replacement of some fluorescent lights in the library. The city is looking into rebates with OMPA. The Progress Club has also voted to pay Ronnie Wilson to call Prime and paint the north windows. Leadership Noble County visited the library on tour downtown last week. We spoke about library services, gave a handout of library history and a tour of the library. The special ads students visited as well. They came in two groups and had a tour and talked about services. Savannah prepared an age-appropriate craft for both groups. Our new website went live about a week ago. It was designed by a company hired by, you ready for your commercial? The Oklahoma Department of Libraries, so that's ODL, and funded by the Institute of Museum and Library Services. It is hosted by ODL. The new site is Google Sites. It is much easier for me to work on than our old one, so I'm very happy with that. Can I have your laptop?
Yep, absolutely. And Tyson should be pulling that up right now. I'm gonna navigate to that.
Where's the mouse? Sorry, I'm showing my H. I'm teasing.
Good one, Pam.
Okay. So this is our new website. Whenever you click on catalog, if you scroll down, there's an online chat feature. The library is closed, so it says it's offline. But you can ask us questions and during business hours we'll answer, and that's really sweet. Let me show you some of my favorite features. This is on the catalog part. What's new? I can look for items in the past month. Will you come scroll down for me?
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna bring a mouse next time. Oh, do click on that search. That's what my problem was, I didn't scroll down and click on search. Okay, here's yours. Yeah. So anything that's in pink is checked out. So it's sort of sweet to look and see our new books are checked out. And I'm gonna go back to the website. And whenever you click on it, it brings you, that jobs, it brings you straight to the city website. So I'm not messing with Christie's HR. And then, so here's the summer reading. So we have our activities. The reading challenge is the same for all the ages. But the activities are listed on here as well. So activities 0 to 11, 9 to 11, and 12 to 18. The tweens do not want to participate with the little ones, they have a choice. So we have broken it down so they have their own activities. So when you're on here, you can also log in with your library card number and your phone number. You can place holds. If it's already checked out, we'll call you when it's your turn. If it's not checked out, we'll just pick it up and put it on the shelf waiting for you. You can renew your materials if no one's waiting. When you get in there with your library card number and your phone number, you can see your reading history. If you don't want us to have our reading history, check that box. Even we won't be able to see your reading history then. But a lot of people like it, because then they know what books they've already checked out. So Savannah's gearing up for SRP. Three Perry principals have agreed to allow Savannah to speak with students regarding our activities and reading incentives. She can generate interest when she can speak with students at an assembly or the classroom. We will send home flyers for the Perry and Morrison schools. We gave you copies of our flyer. She will send those home on colored paper. They won't be black and white. As in previous years, parents and guardians will need to sign their kids up for programs. The meeting room capacity is 40, and if we have it full of tables, it will hold considerably less than 40. The phone lines downstairs are iffy. They have water in the pots lines downstairs. So call the phone number on the flyer, which is the upstairs line. We will begin taking signups on Mondays for the following week. Our goal with summer reading is to get kids into the library and get a reading. Reading levels can increase over the summer if kids are brought to the library and allowed to read books that interest them. Summer is a chance for kids not to be forced to read by their points. If you don't know what those are, you're lucky. Let them read above or below reading level. Let them read the books that truly make them happy. Children need to be five years old to get a library card. A parent or legal guardian need to have a library card to link with a child's card. Kids must be present to get a library card. Adults will need to bring a driver's license or state-issued ID and a piece of official mail. Savannah and Ella will be at the car event on Saturday handing out tattoos and stickers. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Appreciate it. Any other business? Seven, motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
For them.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let's call our regular meeting for the City Council of Perry to order and have roll call.
And coffee. Bledsoe?
Here.
Marshall?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Cold Iron?
Here.
Rupp?
Here.
Williams? For them.
Here. Okay, we've got quorum. Item one, our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right.
And Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Cold Iron?
Yes.
Rupp?
Yes.
For them.
Yes. Item four, comments from those assembled pertaining to items on the city agenda. Okay. Item five, proclamations, commendations, reports, and inquiries by the governing body. So today, we do have a proclamation, and it is for Ms. Gloria Brown. And so I'd like to read this for everybody. Let me take a drink first, because it is two pages long. I love to read. All right. Whereas Gloria Gay Brown was born in Norman, Oklahoma to Raymond and Lucille Felkins and moved to Perry during her sophomore year, where her father ran Ray's Shoe Repair Shop. Whereas although her parents moved back to Norman six months before she was to graduate, Gloria remained in Perry to complete high school. Lived in an apartment over Sheetz Plumbing and worked as soda jerk at Foster's Corner Drug. Whereas while still in high school, Gloria and her future husband Jesse J. Brown met while she was standing on the corner watching all the boys walk by. And they married shortly after her 1960 Perry High School graduation. Whereas Gloria worked not only at Foster's Drug but also for Smith Trucking, Chris's Pharmacy, and Larry's Gun Shop, before filling in as a proofreader for the Perry Daily Journal in 1971, accepting a 20-hour-a-week job from editor Mila Watson that became her lifelong career. Whereas after one year, she became society editor, then family living editor. From there to editor and then managing editor in 2002. Whereas Gloria passionately covered political, civic, and sporting events and was the person who was called on by many United States senators, congressmen, and state officials during their visits to Perry. Whereas Gloria also became the newspaper's photographer, having learned photography from Gene Scoop Taylor, whose name adorns the street sign east of City Hall. Whereas Gloria has been honored as Beta Sigma Pi Woman of the Year, Businesswoman of the Year, FBLA Business Person of the Year, Future Homemaker's Hero, Outstanding Citizen of the Year, and the Grand Marshal of the Cherokee Strip Celebration. Whereas Gloria has served on and chaired the Future Business Leaders of America Adult Advisory Committee and has been on the boards of the Noble County YMCA, the Perry Education Foundation, Perry Camp Fire Organization, United Fund, the Perry Development Coalition, Overcoming Through the Crisis, Main Street of Perry, and as the president and associate member of Perry Study Club. Whereas in 2011, Gloria Brown was inducted into the Oklahoma Journalism Hall of Fame. Whereas for over 50 years, Gloria Brown has been a pivotal member and elder of the Assembly of God Church in Perry and continues to serve on its Board of Elders. Whereas Gloria and her late husband Jay have three children. Tracy and his wife Angela Abney, and husband Rufus, and Tawana Brown, and seven grandchildren. Whereas in 2021, Gloria Brown became a member of the city council, the entity she reported on for so many years, and was an advocate for open government, transparency, and doing right by the citizens of the city of Perry. Whereas on April 14th, 2025, although she chose not to run again, she will continue her good works and faithfulness to her country, city, and God. Now, therefore, it is hereby claimed by Lawrence Ware, the mayor of the city of Perry, Oklahoma, that Gloria Brown is commended for her diligent service to the Perry community and that the East West Street and the Perry Industrial Park shall be renamed Gloria Gay Brown Avenue and that the first week of May 2025 shall be heralded and proclaimed as Gloria Gay Brown Week. And that all residents and others should recognize and congratulate her for her amazing past and continued service to the city of Perry, Oklahoma, and other organizations throughout the great state of Oklahoma. Now, therefore, in addition, a copy of this proclamation shall be published in the Perry Daily Journal. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Gloria.
Gloria, Gloria. You're welcome to come and sit with us every Monday, anyway.
That's not her seat. She was sitting over there.
We didn't name it. We didn't give her another one.
You were never behind it. You were always up there. And even before.
And I see all these kids that grew up, you know, several generations ago and now serving in the community. And it really does my heart proud to see these kids staying home and taking their role in places in the community and doing such great, and also work. And I just am real proud of all of them and proud of all of y'all. And just proudly part of Perry.
Thank you, Gloria. All right. So our council reports. Ward one is not here. Ward two, awesome.
I thought the Main Street did an excellent job for Easter for the A-Kind even through all the work. So just wanted to throw that out there. This is a great event, very well attended, even though the circumstance was not quite favorable. But it did really good.
All right, ward three, did that? Brandon?
I don't want to follow Gloria.
Ward four, there? Okay. I don't have anything as well.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Okay. And now we'll move on to our quarterly report by the Cherokee Strip Museum.
I have a handout, so I'll just have you guys pass it along if you don't mind. Well, good evening, council. I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity to come talk to you all. And this report is reviewing a first quarter, just some statistics and highlighting past events and then talking a little bit about what we're working on right now and upcoming events. Rose Hill School, we had 25 classes and 552 students participate and 44 parents attend. We get a lot of positive feedback from teachers and students. I've been here for 18 months and I would say we've never gotten any good feedback about a school more or any part of the program. It's always been good feedback, so we're really proud of that in our program. And we are having, this may, somebody come do drone photography and videography of our program just to update all of our curriculum and material. So we're excited to kind of have a new front to our website with that. It's gonna be neat to see the kids enacted on that day. And then for our museum, we had 77 visitors and we updated three temporary exhibits. One of them being our Buster Keaton exhibit we did with the, onto highlighted past events Buster Keaton program. That went over really well. We had that in a heritage center. We had about 78 people from all over come to that. So we even had some people staying in hotels here who just had an interest in Buster Keaton. So it was interesting to see people travel here for that. We had a couple segments over that from OETA and News 9. We had a Blacksmith Demonstration and Alliance International Group. We had 35 minutes for that. And upcoming, we have tons of program rolling out. We usually take the first part of the year, do a lot of planning at the museum just because it's a little slower in the cold months, and so it gives us time to plant and do things like grant writing and just planning out the rest of the year. Upcoming, we have a cultural heritage art exhibition. That's May 3rd. I think there's gonna be a lot going on on May 3rd, so that'll be fun. And that will be all day Saturday from 10 to 4. And we're working with art students in Noble County, and they are doing a history project. So they have to kind of do a little digging in their own family history and convey that in their art. And then the top three placings will get $50 prizes. Moving on to June, we have Sounds of the Prairie. We're bringing the Hunt Brothers back again this year. We had them last summer and that went over really well. So that's gonna be fun. June 20th, we have an author coming who wrote the book, Dick Morgan. And so these June things, we haven't fully come out to the public with yet. So those will be updated on the city and council shared calendar. So that'll be in the next couple of days. Excuse me. June 28th, we have a Frank Goma pottery class coming up, and that's gonna be really fun. We've had an interest in the community for doing a pottery class. So that'll be limited. So I think there's only gonna be 20 spaces available. So if it goes down well, we'll have to bring it back. As that, that's all I have. And we just want to say we did use this stipend to offset our utilities. And I say that, but it truly just contributes to our mission. So we always appreciate that help. Excuse me, do you have any questions?
Where is the pottery class gonna be, on the grounds?
It'll be at our blacksmith shop.
Okay, yeah.
And is it evening or an all-day?
It'll be from 1:30 to 3:30. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just wanted to tell you that it's exciting to see all the new things that you're starting out there. I mean, it's a beautiful complex and grounds, and to see that it's being used more for stuff like this is fantastic. So thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. One thing I'm gonna add is, right now, we'll see a lot of construction out there. The state is starting their big plans to redo our grounds, so that's exciting. We're getting all on the roofs right now, so we're so happy. Okay, well, that's all I have. Thank you all, and have a good evening. Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, we have another quarterly report from Aurora with the Main Street.
This year, 1995, I guess 30 years ago, is when Main Street was originally started. So if you guys follow our Facebook at all, we worked with a company out of Edmond to do some highlight reels and a little bit of history on how Main Street started. I tried to add it into this, but I think it was just too much, because it was a lot. It's a five-minute video, but do I need to add something to the presentation?
You can.
Is it casting from here?
Yes, yes.
Sorry, I did it not in this program, so... I gotta get all my programs together. So our original mission when we started 30 years ago is still the same as it is today, but I kind of just felt like we don't emphasize it enough and say it enough and talk about it enough. But our mission is to strengthen our downtown through the collaboration of community and economic development. And our passion is to support historic preservation and experiences for all and the quality of life in the heart of Perry. This year, we were able to receive our national accreditation with the National Main Street of America. We are also still a designated program, and we have been since 1995. But we lost at some point our accreditation with the National Main Street, so we were only affiliated. So when I started, we were only affiliated and we had to work our way to this. It might not sound like that much, just because accredited, affiliated, what's the difference? But it was a lot of work. We had to meet with the National Main Street. They came here in January. We did a transformation strategies, which took two full days, and that was the community survey. We still haven't got all the files and reports back from that yet. But after that completion of that, we had to fill out an annual assessment, which I felt like took me like two days to fill out, because it wanted us to go through everything that our organization does and rank ourselves on a scale of one to five. And then if we ranked it a three or above, you had to explain why. So you kind of had to go in and say, this is why we felt that way. And after we did it, then Melanie and I sat on a call for probably three hours with our Oklahoma liaison as she went through every single thing and would say why she agreed with us or why she disagreed with us. So it was really neat. It kind of like showed us the things that we need to work on, but then it also felt good for her to say, you might have thought you were a four, but we think you're a five, you know? And give us a little bit of extra credit. And so it was good. It was good just to see the things that we're working on, the progress we've made, and where we, things that we need to do. With that national accreditation, we are able to do more things with our organization that we weren't able to. We can host trainings in our community that we weren't able to do before. And then there's lots of grants that are only national-accredited organizations are able to receive. So that was a big success for us to get that, and I feel like it's the hard work that we've put in the past few years in order to get to that point. The other infographic there is something that the Oklahoma Main Street puts out to us every year. And it'll show, it's kind of hard to see on that, but the bottom number is the number from 1995 to the day. And then the top numbers that you see are just in the last year. So in the last year, we had 629 volunteer hours. We had 18 building rehabilitations downtown. We had 13, it says new businesses, but they could either be expansions, opening, or relocations of businesses. And then it shows our population. And then it also shows our 2024 private reinvestments for downtown was 762,000. And then at the bottom of that shows our program to date. So those are... So those are pretty big numbers and we're excited for that. With this slide, I was just gonna go ahead and put everything together and kind of go through it. So all of our board members sit on a committee. So we're a working board. So every board member that joins has to join a committee. And so we have four different committees, Organization, Economic Vitality, Design, and Promotion. We look like party planners most of the time, but that's really only one part of it. Everybody says, "You're just party planners." We are. We like to have a good party, but we also do other things. So our organization is really our committee that is our fundraising committee. They're the ones who like make the wheel spin and get our finances in order. So we have our partnership platform, our golf tournament. Any type of fundraising and grant funding falls into our organization. Our Economic Vitality Committee focuses on capital investments. You guys can read that there. I'm not gonna read all of it. But they're really our economic vitality that wants to grow the downtown. So with that, we have our facade program. We recently hosted our Tools for Your Business back in February. Last year, we did a Resources for Your Business and toured vacant buildings. And recently, this committee met last week and we are working on using Placer AI to see if there's any fit for potential businesses to the Perry Pharmacy Building and the Old O'Reilly's Building. And so we're working with the property owners of that also, what they think might be a good fit. So our design committee is really enhancing the physical and visual assets of the commercial district. We are on the National Registry for Historic Districts. We have 88 contributing sites. So really keeping that historic feature with downtown is very important because other buildings, if somebody wants to come in and do a historic tax credit project, they'll be able to do that. So we have a design assistance program that we're able to get through the Oklahoma Main Street, through Method Group out of Tulsa. They can come and do any type of architect drawings for the front or the interior, which is free up to $2,000 of assistance. And so we're able to offer that through the design committee. We also are completing the next few phases with celebration lighting for the permanent lighting downtown. So at the end of this week, we're gonna meet with the electrician to see where outlets need to be installed and then hopefully get started on that soon. And then today, Blazer Pro installed our first downtown speaker, which is in the front of the Main Street office. So we will start putting all those together, one building at a time. They won't be every building. They'll be very spread out, but...
You say speaker?
Yeah.
Cool.
A downtown speaker system. So that was a part of the Oklahoma Main Street incentive grant that we got, was like a matching grant. So we were able to get that at the end of last year. So we are starting on that, so that's good. And then this committee also is working on some different drawings and different things with the downtown bandstand. So it's kind of like a green space project, whether we're gonna maybe add in some more exciting pieces to the downtown around the bandstand and maybe upgrade a few things. So that is what that organization or that committee's working on. And then at last, our Promotions Committee, which is our fund committee that really is a little bit of like commercial district center where we want to bring people downtown to shop the stores that are downtown, to promote the downtown. I know it does look like sometimes we just wanna have fun in the square, but at the end of the day, that's the purpose of it, is to bring those people downtown. And so with that, we helped with the Lions Club Easter at Hunt. Our burnouts will be a part of Spring Fest this Saturday, as long as there's not any rain. We are doing a vintage market by the Yankee Dime on the 500 Mile Garage sale. We will host a summer event in June. Our Meet a Maroon night will be August. And then Lemonade, Stanzas of the Weekend of Local will be sometime in there. Our street dance during the Cherokee Strip Centennial Celebration. Our banquet will be in May. Nope, why did I say May? Our banquet will be in October, Halloween, and then Christmas. This is just another thing I wanted to add. Since I've been here last, we have added Paula Gotch Talk and Aspen Ward. They both work 10 hours each in our office and it's been amazing. I didn't know I needed so much help until I had help and it's really great. And then the last thing I really wanted to hit on was our partnership with the city. So I'm not sure the history of what the city has budgeted for Main Street. I know since I've been here, it's been $20,000. And so our executive committee met and we kind of pulled a strategic plan that Nate had sent us a while back and kind of looked over it and kind of looked at where we felt like we fit. And I couldn't believe how many things that we were helping with the strategic plan that you guys have got. But when we really kind of looked deep into it, which I know it's very small to read, but the first thing on the strategic plan that you guys had had was the quality of life. And we really fit into that revitalization of the downtown through our four-point approach, which is our four different committees. We really try hard to market Perry and our downtown by attracting new businesses in a positive way. And I feel like sometimes, obviously, that's hard because somebody's always a little negative about anything that you wanna do. But I feel like we really have a good following and I feel like throughout our social media and our website and our emails, we have a lot of good feedback from that, which kind of fell into the communication piece of the strategic plan. And then the tax base was hosting downtown events while generating traffic. Last year, I think we saw over 10,000 people come into the downtown for our downtown events. And I don't know if that included Christmas this last year or not, but either way, it's growing and people are coming from really far places to come to some of our events because they say that there's just a lot more to do when they come to Perry for our events. And then with our housing, we have a new thing with the Main Street of America called the Boomstrucker. And it's a building opportunities on Main Street, but it is a real cool database that we have free access to, that we can go in and we can put in a building, so say like Thorn Originals. We can put that building in and we can say, "This is a one-story building. This is the square footage of it. This is what's in it now." And then we can just build each building. So it will eventually show us what type of housing could be downtown if you put in a second story. And is there somebody living in it? Is there not anybody living in it? But it can show you the potential of housing that you could have within the downtown that we're not using. And so we haven't put all the data in there. For some reason, our boundaries that they had were kind of not including one side of the square, so they're trying to update our boundaries. But with that, it'll give us a lot of data on the amount of housing that's downtown that could be potentially turned into downtown apartments that we're not using right now.
The other piece of that, Laura, is we've been working with a private donor to get a grant system in place to incentivize people to put in apartments. Kind of like we set aside some funding to incentivize. We've been working with someone to add additional things for that.
And so with our grants that we offer, the two grants that we have is obviously the facade and beautification grant, but we also have the grant coming for anything that's like gonna boost economic development within the downtown. So like anything that could be inside of the building, maybe the business needs help with certain things or maybe it just needs like, obviously, these old buildings, you can get into a lot of things that you just didn't realize you were gonna get into. And so we really want that to not be a hindrance. And we really feel like both of those grants can maybe, like, people might choose us over somebody else because we have a little bit of assistance. I know we did a facade grant for a business that said they could have chose two other towns, but our town was the only one that had something that was financially assisting them for starting a new business. So with that, our partnership now, the city is obviously our biggest partner by far. You guys currently fund us at $20,000. And so we were just asking for a proposal of increase for you guys to give us $40,000. I think our contract renews in June?
July.
July.
July. So we'll be looking at budgets in the next couple of council meetings. So if you guys want me to, I can bring kind of a proposal of what that would look like.
And I can answer any more questions or anything. This is just a list of our board members. And then I was gonna add in the cute video, not that we had time to watch it, but it probably isn't as cute when it's five minutes long. If you guys have any questions about anything, any of this stuff, I'd love to hear out of you.
I don't have any questions, but I'm very excited about the events and programs that you guys have put on. It just proves that if you think big and plan big, people will come. And so congratulations on what you're getting done. I love the fact that you've built a plan that can also mirror some of the things we're trying to do as a city. That extra synergy adds power. So congratulations and thank you.
All right, item number six, city manager remarks on current projects and activities.
Yeah, so I have a couple of things. The first is the Stonehill Edition. So many of you have probably noticed that the power lines have been put up in that edition. Last council meeting, I mentioned how we were trying to finalize the contract. We've got that finalized and sent to the developer and are just waiting for him to sign it and get it back to us so we can bring it to you guys. So the ball's in their court. As I've mentioned, every time we talk about Stonehill Edition, I would not recommend anyone buy a property until the agreement is signed. Obviously, it's up to the players, but that's my recommendation. Second thing I wanted to talk about is we've gotten a lot of help in our Parks Department recently. So Ditch Witch helped us build and replace some tools in some of our parks and we're super grateful for that. I know Patty talked to me about that in our last one-on-one and was just very grateful for all the work that they did. As well as, we've had private donors and then our Parks team working to clean up CCC Lake. So if you've gone up there recently, you may have seen all the work done there and it looks really, really good. So we just wanted to thank our Parks team and as well as that private donor who didn't give me permission to share the name, so I'm not going to. But we're grateful for all those efforts. I wanted to thank staff and everyone who participated in our citywide cleanup. That event went really, really well. And we're just grateful that that happens every year. It seems like we get rid of a lot of stuff that nobody needs and it just makes the town look a lot better. And then the last thing I wanted to do, Tyson, I'm gonna share my screen one more time, is I went up to the hospital with MedaFun this last week to share some of the updates that we've seen in the hospital. And this shows you, so this picture to the left is the gutted room. So this is where observation rooms are gonna be in the hospital. And that was in January. And then the picture to the right is as of this week, how it's looking. So they've made a ton of progress. It looks really, really good. They have a couple of different observation rooms in here. And just another pitch for the hospital, they can do everything, just about everything that they've ever done. So there's not really any changes. Please use the hospital. It's gonna look really, really nice when it's done. But it's still functioning and at full capacity, so... I think that's all I have in terms of remarks. Does anyone have any questions for me that I can answer?
I've got a question about the hospital.
Yeah.
It's kind of an uninformed question, but when Senator Langford was here not too long ago, he was visiting Ditch Witch, and we asked him about the fact that in today's regulation, we can't have swing beds or anything that would allow a person to stay longer in that hospital than the 24 hours or whatever a lot of time is. He indicated that there were some people working on adjusting those regulations. Do you know if there's any movement on that or if you've heard anything? Or is there a place we can look to see if any of that kind of stuff has happened? Because I think the legislation was wonderful and it saved a lot of rural hospitals, but like anything that's first written, it could stand to be improved. As a city and as people that are listening to this, are there some things we can go do or contact that would help make that a better regulation to help the city keep hospital and bring in more revenue?
Yeah, really good question. I don't have any updates on the legislation. I agree that it was a really good first attempt, but I've heard that there are things that could use updating. I would like to say though that the 24-hour limit is flexible because they take an average. So don't feel like, you know, once you're there for 23 hours and 58 minutes, you're gonna get booted. They actually can keep people longer. Courtney, in fact, when we were touring this week, talked about those observation rooms being 24 to 48 hours. So they have to stay within an average of all patients in terms of time. But there is some flexibility there to kind of just nip that in the bud so people don't misunderstand. But I don't have an update on the legislation.
I think what people are looking for though is grandma's not doing well. We'd like for her to stay someplace for a week or two.
Yeah.
And we can beat up Perry in one minute or we can drive to Still 130 and it should be nice to be able to keep her here. And under the current regulations, they can...
Right. Yeah, it's really not made for the week or two weeks, it's... They won't keep people that long. Yeah, sorry, I don't have a great answer. I know that I've heard talks about them working on something, but I don't have any updates at the state level.
Well, actually Medicare, the federal locals were writing this. And there have been numerous requests as people got into this program now, started getting paid. Those pieces that have started to come about have generated this exact issue that needs to be resolved because there are situations where these local hospitals still could be used for a lot of that service that they're not being used for.
Yeah, I don't think we're the only one that's in this program that could benefit from some fine tuning.
Yes.
That's all I have. All right, any other questions for Nate? Okay, moving along. Item number seven, our CFO report on our financials.
Well, sorry, just as we were saying, Randy, let me just have one other piece on that. It's not only the long-term state pieces that are getting addressed. It's also items related to the transfer and ambulance and the additional costs that we bear, you know, from having to operate, being the ambulance operator. I'm sure you guys saw over, it's been in the last two weeks, I know, the big article, our new story down in the state, you know, related to transfers in rural hospitals and ambulance service in rural hospitals and the state legislation going through right now. You know, I mean, there's a lot of things that are kind of hitting these topics. And it is a higher priority, you know, because at the end of the day, unfortunately, governments have to pick up the empty hole that private businesses don't fulfill. And, you know, if more and more private businesses cannot make money doing these services, the fewer and fewer of them are going to do it. And when fewer and fewer of them do unnecessary item, i.e. EMS services, the cities are gonna be looked at more and more to pick that up. And so, you know, it's gonna be, it's an ever-evolving piece that continues to change. It needs to have different facets being looked at across the board. That being, the ambulance service being at the state level, but also then funding looking at under the Medicare program, you know, to help facilitate that. So all of those things are at least in discussion points and being worked on related to that.
Before you go on, you have to think of another question. If there are people looking at this or organizations and they've developed this hot list of things that need to change, who are they and how do I get ahold of them to make sure they understand my opinion? Or the rest of the people in this city? And I don't have to have that tonight, but if you or Bryce could help us come up with something along those lines, it'd be great. Because I'm passionate about keeping that hospital here. I'm very concerned listening to other cities and people from other cities that are in this same situation that are slightly bigger and the pain is harder on them. And they're very concerned in keeping their hospital as well. And so I think if it stays as it is today, it was just a Band-Aid on a major wound. We've gotta get it figured out better.
Totally agree. And we'll work for that and get you some names and things for that contact. On the finance side, guys, you know, I mean, the numbers are looking good. You know, we continue to be up in our sales tax collections. A lot of that upper side is related to construction projects and those pieces that are bringing us back in above, you know, projected numbers. Nate and I were talking today about the long-term piece and the forecast of 2026, you know, for fiscal year 2026 and what we're going to be looking at, you know, from construction and those kind of things. Because that's gonna be a big driver working in the short term related to sales tax. Now hopefully, in the long term, as those sales tax turn into permanent residents and then turn into general spend... Now hopefully, in the long term, as those sales tax turn into permanent residents and then turn into general spending, we will start to see those increased growth numbers, you know, on our sales tax. But at the end of the day, right now, to keep those numbers up and keep them where we need them to be, we do need sales tax to stay up. Year-to-date, sales tax up about 18%, use tax up 21%. So those are those are good numbers over prior year, which is also then more in excess of our sales tax and use tax budgeted numbers. Because we always try to budget those in as a conservative number. Matter of fact, whenever you look at the end number right now, our sales tax for the month is going to be 100%. By the time we've collected this month's sales tax, we're at 100%. So we're effectively 25% ahead of where we want to be at at the end of the year. The other numbers.
So Russ, when you say we're ahead of where we want to be, off the top of your head or just an estimate, how does that compare to last year?
So so compared compared to last year, we're, right now, we would expect to be at 75%. We're at 100% of sales tax collection. Our of that, we're 21% ahead of last year's numbers. So we're just about 4% off from our budget, you know, in where we ended up at this point. So just those are relative numbers, but, you know, trying to try to give it to you, we're we will be about $150,000 to the good on general fund sales tax collections for the year. So that's that's the positive, in a dollar figure, which I think is what you're wanting me to get.
Well, no, I was trying to get was are we are we ahead of last year or are we ahead of what we budgeted to be? And is that number the same?
Well, we're ahead of both, you know, and and so, yes, we're ahead of not only last year, 21% over last year. We're setting budget-wise, we're setting 100% and we should be at 75% right now. So so we're ahead, carrying both of those numbers. CPI, you know, is is down under 2% for the first time for our region. So our March CPI numbers, 1.9%, which is a number that if you'll remember, in the last few years, we've been talking eights and nines. You know, I mean, these were very significantly high numbers, less was down a little bit. But, you know, this is finally back into a sustainable growth expectation as far as rates go. Our hope is, and I don't know if you guys even watched the market today, but the market took another another dip as far as that goes. We've got the Fed and the President, I guess, battling it out day in and day out. But interest rates are still staying high, which is going to probably continue to keep the CPI at a lower number. We just hope that number doesn't get into a negative piece because then we start worrying about recessionary fears, which come, as far as we're concerned, related to dollars that are spent by our consumers. So because that's really where where we're looking at is what's in the dollars that are going out day in and day out. The PCA, the Power Cost Adjustment, is what Ron and I talked about. I mean, it's as close to zero. It's four hundredths of a penny is what our PCA is going to be. So that's like saying our projected cost of of underlying wholesale cost of electricity that we have built into our rate is as close to perfect as pretty much it can be. I'm not taking credit for that. Again, I always give credit to Earl for that number. But there again, that that number is about as close to perfect as it could be. Our goal is for it to be neither plus nor minus month in and month out. And so the last two months, it's it's been up, it's been down. You know, it's five hundredths of a cent last month. This month, it's four hundredths of a cent under. So you average that out, and I just don't know in between two months if we can get any closer to the zero number as far as that goes. On the of the cash schedule, you know, we we did break out a little bit of a different number this month. Something that I've been intending to do, just because I want to make sure you guys see exactly where caches are. But we have our cash bank, we have our CDs, giving us our total unrestricted funds. But there's another line, and we broke out of those unrestricted funds. What used to we have been keeping as just the council-committed funds, we just left them all rolled up. Council-committed funds are things, i.e. grant matches, appropriations for larger projects, those kind of things that we've done, that we've committed to. I just want to make sure that that you guys can see and understand exactly, hey, yes, we may have, you know, $19 million of the bank. But of that, $7 million is directly committed by restrictions of the donors, by restrictions of sales tax, restrictions of certain pieces. Another $7 million of that money is committed based on projects that we have going out, which leaves us then really our uncommitted funds. We average out as far as the PWA, it averages out to just over a month's worth of cash. If you look at unrestricted cash, a million dollars in the PWA. We just have barely a month's worth of real unrestricted cash available to keep all paying bills and doing what what our operating expenses are for the for for the PWA. But then on the general fund, you know, we we have the excess money. Of that money, the transfers out related to the grant reimbursements that need to go back to the council or need to go back to the PNA amount of a million and a half dollars that need to be moved back over there for OWRE grant forgiveness and grant matches. So when we take that down, you know, it's not like we're setting on a lot of cash. We have just seven months' worth of cash on hand related to the general fund operations and about a month related to the PNA. So I'm just trying to give you guys more and more of a realistic idea of such cash in the bank. But man, we've got a laundry list of things that that we're doing and that we're committed to that usually carry over from year to year and for sure aren't just expended within any one given period. So if questions come up, you at least have numbers. And as always, Holly, let me let me answer those questions if something comes up because I'll have I'll have a little better insight into specifics related to those things. As far as operations go, we're at 70%. You guys will see that that all of our all of our departments, except for those that have paid insurance or have seasonal adjustments, look to be where we want them, at least at this point in the year. As far as the PMA goes and our utilities, we've we've kind of now met the low point related to electric and water. So you'll see ones at 76%, ones at 75% on our seasonally adjusted averages in where things go. March is kind of like our break-even zero number. This is the one month that we should be at about 75%, exactly what those percentages are. We will start seeing electric and water, you know, kind of tick up the the remaining 8% each month from now until we get to June. June is one of those months that that can or that can be a little higher. We're hoping for it to be higher, but to do that, it has to be hot and it has to be dry. And that's where we make all our extra money. So although everybody enjoyed the rain, except for Austin, he didn't get to go out this weekend. But everybody else enjoyed having the rain, I know the farmers did. And so we're always happy to have that piece. With that, you guys have any questions related to financials?
The CPI, which month is it that we use the CPI?
Marches. So 1.9 is what CPI is going to be.
So when we get to a six-month or a one-year anniversary of our rate change on the water, could we get some kind of a comparison of what revenue that has been bringing on compared to what it did the previous six months? I just be curious, does that kind of align? What have we done to help get some revenue into the into the coffers?
Yes.
That started February?
Yes, we implemented it for January. We saw the first questions in February. So we're just a couple of months. But we'll get you, we'll do it with the June numbers. And that way, you'll see six months in, we can say, hey, here here was the additional net revenue generated over the first six months.
Perfect.
And then, and then, of course, updated each year.
Right. I think you need to compare that to last year from February to now.
Hotel motel's down a little bit.
Hotel motel's down a little bit, yes. We're overall, February, across all all hotel motel sick code was down in general. We are working on on back collection on on one facility that will that should make up a good portion of that number, too.
So even the 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 bounce we had from the four-day concert wasn't enough to?
You won't put that until May?
Yeah, we'll see that one next month.
You'll see a good job.
Yeah, February, nobody comes to Oklahoma to ski, so it's a little slower.
That tells me if people are leaving to go to the farm.
All right, any other questions for Russ? Let's go to item number eight. Consider appointment of council member toward one post one vacant seat. If multiple candidates use ballot procedure, appoint a minister oath of office. So we have two individuals that have shown interest in filling Gloria's seat. We have Coach Bangs and Shay Bochet. And so we'd like to invite each of you to kind of come up, introduce yourself, tell us why you're crazy enough to do this with the rest of us. And then if counsel, if you guys have any questions or comments after they present, you are welcome to. So let's start with Coach.
First of all, thank you guys for your consideration. I can honestly say that this is never a place I thought I'd be standing because I'm a country boy and I've been living in the country my whole life. And so, but with that being said, my family and I moved here about three and a half years ago. And I've been teaching at school for five years. And I'm in a lot of place in town that my wife absolutely loves. My kids love the schools here. Obviously, me being an educator, I love serving. I've been serving youth for over 15 years. And really, I just look at this as an opportunity to serve the community. Besides being an educator, my wife serves at the jail over here. And then we also have real estate business here in town where we're actively buying, trying to improve houses and provide better housing. And so anything that we can do is her, that's what I'm here for. So you might have any questions for me?
What does your wife do in the jail?
She ministers to the women that come in. So I just, I don't know exactly, I just.
She goes to jail.
I think she ministers some women up there, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Shay, the floor is yours.
Thank you. My name is Shay Bochet, and I have lived in Perry off and on for about goodness, all but 15 years, and I'm I'm moving up there. So I actually graduated from Perry High School and went to school at Oklahoma State and took off to Dallas, Texas, because that's where my career with the Y started. And every time I came home to see my grandmother, I would think, when I was going back to Dallas, I would think, how do people get to live here? Like, how do people get to have a career in Perry, Oklahoma, that they can live here? I wasn't a teacher, I wasn't a banker, I didn't have any background that I could work with at Ditch Witch, or at least I thought. So I stayed in Dallas until I married a boy and talked him into moving back to Perry. And we lived here about 10 years. And at that point, it was time for me to go back to work, so we moved to Tulsa, Oklahoma, where I worked for the Y. And then we came back again in 2019 because the CEO position was open here at the at the local Y. Got to move here right before COVID. My grandmother at the time was, gosh, 100 years old. So I was able to spend that time with her. And it has been a decision, coming back to Perry was one of the best decisions that we ever made. I don't think I necessarily thought we would be back in Perry. My two oldest kiddos graduated from Wasso. I have one child who started at Ditch Witch today and another one that's in grad school at OSU. I've got a senior that graduates, I think, same 25 days, something like that. I'm not gonna cry. And then a kid, a daughter that's 16. So when I was working at the Y, I tried very hard not to participate in anything that may be a conflict of interest. I was, I am a deacon at the Presbyterian Church, and I also have served on the main street board. My job changed in November, which allowed, sorry, allowed me to do other things. So that is why I'm here. Does that mean my tone's up?
You're a big hook.
Those a few for me know, like, I ran for school board this past goodness, it's been a couple of months, loved it. I want to serve and that's, I did not get elected school board. And then I found out that this was open, and I just want to serve. I think one of the most honorable things that you can do in a community is serve. And I don't know a lot about city government, I have to put that out there. I do know budgets. I didn't understand everything, not even close to everything that Russ was saying, but.
Okay, we don't either.
But I am a learner, I'm a very curious person, and I am a servant. I mean, I like to serve, so I really would like this opportunity. And if anyone has any questions, let me know.
Any questions for Shay?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Shay. All right. Counsel, have any discussion on that?
We do ballots, or?
So we would do ballots, yeah. Do we have those for some prepared?
You do.
Yes, I suppose we would have to. Oh, I guess, so Bryce, so we would have to nominate both of these individuals and then do ballots?
No, I think that if you do ballots, you have two candidates in front of you. Because because these ballots are, in fact, open record, you know, put put your candidate down, also put your own name on. And and they'll be collected and part of the, and they could be, they could be collected. They don't necessarily have to be part of the minutes, but they'd have to be disclosed to somebody to know what they were. Because all of our voting needs to be open. So.
So you have to write the candidate name and our.
Yes, and then also, and then they'd be counted up. And then whoever wins, of course, there's six here, so there could be a tie. But whoever wins, we need to, it needs to be approved by five votes. So I'm hopeful that everyone, you know, whoever wins, it gets approved by five votes because that's what it takes.
Anyone need a pen?
So we could potentially have to do this over?
You you might have to do it 100 times, yeah.
It's like the presidential. So I guess we can send it down to Chris and then.
I have a vote for Shay. A vote for Kyle Beans. A vote for Kyle. And then a vote for Shay.
You getting a water?
I'm sorry. Another vote for Shay.
My hills need a water?
And another vote for Shay. So that's four.
Yes, so if if you want, someone can make a motion for Shay a second, and we need at least five votes.
So then the next vote would be Joe Hens or?
Oh, no, she'll just call it, roll call.
I would say I nominate Shay Bochet to fill the vacant seat for Ward One Post Two.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we've got nomination and second?
No waters.
Oh. Yeah, we're out, I'm sorry.
So with that, we'll have roll call.
And Bloodso.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Coldiron.
No.
Rupp.
Yes.
And Worthy.
Yes. Okay.
So are you ready to take the oath? Did you make the oath? Well, you can you can do this now? Yeah, she's gonna administer the oath.
There is a $500.
Okay. I state your name.
I, Joe Fisher.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, obey, and defend
that I will support, obey, and defend
the Constitution of the United States
the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma
and that I will not knowingly receive
and that I will not knowingly receive
directly or indirectly
directly or indirectly
any money or other valuable thing
any money or other.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As city council member.
As city council member.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Okay? Welcome.
Thank you Shay and welcome to the council.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead and sign the, sign the oath. Yeah, you can print your name and sign it, yes. And sign right there.
It's a nice pen.
Don't get Bryce going anywhere.
Is there a story behind the pen?
It's from Hawaii. If I could get an expensive pen, then I won't lose it.
So would it have been unlawful for us to have gone to an executive session to discuss those two candidates or?
No, we could have.
We haven't scheduled that way to do, actually in the last council meeting, but then decided to do the ballot system this time.
We'd ask for both.
So you know, still done the ballots, come out of it?
Because.
Okay, I thought since it wasn't on the agenda, we couldn't.
Oh, no, no, we could, if it's not on the agenda written that way, then you cannot.
Yeah, and we didn't have it anyway.
Right.
We did it last time, but we misunderstood, we thought you.
There's actually, there's actually an argument as to whether or not, because going, you must convene concerning individual soured officers, okay? And, and the, and the question is, for your salary, is that the kind of salary they were talking about? Are we really talking about a soured clerk, you know, or a soured attorney, you know? However, I, I looked at it, there's no law on it, I sought counsel from another, a city attorney, longtime city attorney, we argued about it and we agreed that it was lawful, okay? But of course, you know, that's just an opinion. And, you know, a judge handing an opinion, it's always just an opinion until it's a final opinion. And so, you know, it might be right, it might be wrong. You certainly would be, have been protected if on my advice you convened, okay? Maybe it's better we didn't.
Okay.
Okay. Now, I, we've never done it before, I've never seen it done in any other city, but when you ask the question, I do believe it's lawful.
Thank you.
All right. Item number nine, consider appointment of five members to the Board of Adjustment. If the mayor appoints, confirm each member appointed individually. Now with this and the last, we've recently changed this to where it could be someone that lives within the county, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
It, it's within or without, I wouldn't go any further than, than that.
Okay. Then I have gotten four and waiting on a fifth. But for the Board of Adjustments, I have, we have Brian Wheatley, who has agreed to stay on continually is on the Board of Adjustments. Tracy Sherman. Shelby Duke. And Dixie Johnson. Correct? So those are the four that I've heard back from so far. And so we will still need a fifth, but.
So one of those four do not live in the Perry area.
One of those is do not, Tracy lives within the county. Yeah.
Dixie does, I think, correct?
Yeah, Dixie doesn't either. Dixie lives right across.
Dixie lives right across, yeah. So so far that's two within the city and then two that live within the county, but work and are a part of our community.
Yeah, and I may just add, Mayor, for those watching who maybe missed last meeting, change that last meeting. Up until last meeting, you had to live within the city and there were really specific requirements. We just found it really burdensome to fill these seats with those requirements, so we removed them by ordinance in last meeting.
So are you looking for a fifth recommendation or?
If you have one, I'd be open to it. If you get someone.
No, I'm just asking the question.
So yes, we still need a fifth person, but I have heard back from four so far that have agreed to do it.
And there is, there is a requirement that one of them be on the council?
No.
No.
But it, but it does also, it could be.
It, it, it may be a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Between what the Board of Adjustment does and what the council does.
I'll talk to him.
We would ask if you have four, please appoint them.
Oh, yes.
Because we have business that.
That's, that's my recommendation for right now.
That people are waiting for.
To, that we appoint those four and that hopefully by the next meeting I'll have a fifth.
I'm excited about those four that you listed.
How often do they?
They meet when there's an appeal, correct? Yeah, if there's an appeal, zoning.
When there's a request for a variance.
Right.
Quite frankly, I showed it to Derek today, he stopped by. Most often, there are setbacks when people want to put in carports. And I've drafted a carport ordinance that's going to go up the chain that will provide that you can get an administrative approval without going to the Board of Adjustment to protect cars and to protect property. And we'll see if you approve it or not. If so, their meetings will be even further scattered out. So I mean, they probably, they meet a couple times a year.
Very much.
So that would eliminate the, for a carport, the neighbors being notified and.
Provided by right, yeah.
Yes, it would, and you may or may not be for it. But it founded in another state and we thought about the incident of severe weather and hail and we thought, well, we might as well present this here because of that. And of course, we could make changes to that. But that's not on the agenda, but I did want to point that out. It's important because if that did get passed, the incident of this board meeting would be less and less.
So with that, do we need to have a motion or just?
I would, I would vote on each one. And of course, you need to pick which, which seat they are. We talked about, so we're going to.
Two years, I think.
We're going to, let's take a look at that ordinance.
Do we want to discuss that with that?
Excuse me?
Would we want to discuss that with those members of the board to see which seats they'd maybe want to fill or?
You certainly could.
Okay.
We were going to, they're staggered. Two for three, two for two, one for one.
But is there a term limit?
Then thereafter, it's, I believe, three years.
But like Brian, he's been on it, so he just reappointed, I guess.
That's what I guess my question is. Tonight, if we need to get them moving, if they wanted to be on a three-year term and we put them in a two, they can always be reappointed, correct?
Absolutely, okay.
So I don't think we're going to injure anybody by going ahead and moving forward.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve Brian Wheatley to take Board Position One.
Second. Okay, we'll start with Brian.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Williams. The wrong one. There's a person next to me now completely on Boche.
Yes.
And Wertham.
Yes.
I'll nominate Tracy Sherman, Position Two.
Okay.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boche.
Yes.
Wertham.
Yes.
Nominate Dixie Johnson for Board Position Three.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boche.
Yes.
Wertham.
Yes. Shelby Duke.
Okay, I nominate Shelby Duke for the opposition.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Cold Iron.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boche.
Yes.
Wertham.
Yes.
Okay, so this takes care of item number nine. I'll have a fist one court hopefully by this next meeting. And item number 10, motion to consider agenda item previously tabled and consider approval of section 1.4A of Perry Purchasing Manual, providing for the authority of the city manager to make purchases, contracts, leases, payments and to perform other actions within designated spending limits.
So if you remember this one, it was brought up in the past. The idea behind it is although my, my limit for approval is $50,000, I cannot currently do things like contracts, which often, even within that limit, which often becomes a problem because it just takes up more time here, right? We had an issue just this week where a staff member came and said, hey, our printer's broken, I'd like to do a lease on a printer. It was like, I don't know, 45 bucks every, or whatever it is. And just very minimal and it's like, oh, it's kind of unfortunate because I have to take that to council, you know, it's like, why? So that's why this purchasing manual update was brought to you initially. Last time it was turned away just because I think Gloria had some concerns about how long I'd been in. I think I'd been six months or so and we felt like it was time to bring this back to, to see council's thoughts on it.
See, I, I would add one thing. If you remember Bill Tackett and David Weatherford, when he spoke to you, they said that, that you.
Under an hour.
You're over, remember that.
Under an hour.
You know, they talked about the things that are on the agenda are, you know, they said a number of things, but the, the things that are on the agenda are things where you haven't already delegated that authority, right? If you've delegated the authority, then you're putting that person responsible for that and of course, you know, they're responsible for that decision. The only things that should be before you in that area are things which haven't been delegated. I would say that that is the, is the larger concept here to get as many things as we can delegate. You remember, he spoke about, you know, delegating the authority on a $2 million project, you know? We're not asking for that here. You have authorized him up to $50,000 if, already, if, if to implement that, he has to sign an agreement or a contract or, or make a bulk chemical purchase or, or, or any of the things that are listed on this. But we don't want to, we don't want to have the issue, you know, was he authorized to do that? Well, that's a lease, that's a contract, that's a claim, you know, he's authorized up to 50 grand. So I mean, that's really why it's presented to you to do away with those issues. Of course, if you're, if you're still not ready, this doesn't have to be in the manual. The, the city operates without it, you know? It just perhaps not as smoothly. The, the things that Weatherford and Phil Tackett said were convincing to me, but it's not me that has to do the convincing, you're the governing body and this is Perry, so.
But my question was, so this doesn't take away to where he can spend all willy-nilly as he likes outside of the budget and he still has to stay within the budget that we prepared? If you're going to make a purchase or a contract, that's something outside of what we budgeted, that still has to come to us and be made as a budget amendment, correct?
Yeah, there has to be a budget appropriation for anything, for anything outside the budget. And you, of course, have dictated his spending by way of the purchasing manual and have said how he, how he must bid, what, what requirements are there? And of course, if there's an exception that's going to be made there, that exception can be made by him, okay? But it has to be brought to you for approval, as you know, under that waiver procedure, you have to approve that waiver. So, so you've set out the rules for him, it's just that sometimes it'll come to me, can I sign this? No, it's 50, but it's a lease, but you know, I'm not sure if you're authorized or not to do that and then it has to wait. So I'm sure that anybody in that position would exercise that prudently because, you know, wouldn't want to get called out by the council and if, and if he feels that it needs to come to you, I'm sure that, that it'll bring it to you. But this, this is a Weatherford document, okay? I mean, I, I didn't make it out of whole cloth, you won't see a whole lot of billing for this. That's one of the things that, that I got from him a number of months ago when we first presented this.
But one of the things they talked about was if you've approved a contract for a million dollars and then the billing starts to come in, this would also allow him to pay those bills without us approving, is that correct?
Well, that is, we did that one time. We did that one time, remember, we did that on the roof out at the water plant. We, we had you approve a resolution, a separate action. Approve a resolution which on that project granted him the authority to do that. We wanted to see how that worked and we got that closed up, it was.
And I kept you updated.
He kept.
But voting on it could be voted on, like that would make that permanent.
No, each one of those on.
We'd still have to vote.
On those projects, yes, we're not, we're, this is not doing that. If, if there's a, if there's a project, you know, that we're wanting to do that again, we'll bring that and explain it to you.
And add that as part of the language in that project?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be only associated per project. I, I don't want to get it too, too remote. The council does need to control spending, but we have a purchasing manual. This just, to me, it clears up ambiguities.
Okay.
But any major project, we will bring to you and have you authorized. If we do it again, he's got a suggestion.
Derek, you have a question? Derek has a comment.
When this came before us last time, I think I remember the, the example being used was chemicals for water treatment, I think, is the one you used back then. I thought we took action on this then, but.
We were really close, if I remember right, and Gloria had that concern about how long I'd been in.
So just, how does that work today? Is it working buying chemicals the way you have or is that not working?
Yeah, so the way it's, it's working now is if we budgeted something, but we start a new contract, we have to, have to bring it before you. So even if it's budgeted, if it's some kind of lease or contracted agreement, then I bring it before council. And what I'd like to do is just say, council's budgeted this and whether I spend it in a lease or a one-time purchase, who really cares, you know? And this clears that up and allows me to do that.
What was the original purpose for having this in there to begin with? Why?
Two, you mean to add this?
No, no, why, why is it that he can't do that now? Why, what was the original purpose for not including cron tax leases, payments and things like that in the purchasing manual? Does this, is it explicitly say that they can't or is this just something to add that?
Well, like for instance, the one on bulk chemical purchases that are routine and necessary for the operation of utility systems does not contain the extra language up to his.
Spending.
Spending limit, okay? So I think that that one can be like $60,000. I mean, I've seen it higher than, than 50. I mean, if it's a proprietary chemical, we have to have it, we can't treat water, we're asking you to authorize that. Now, if it was $220,000, you know, good luck if he wants to sign that. I mean, why buying so much? There may, very well may be some questions. Most of these are limited, if you read them, to either specific budget items or not more than the, not, not more than his purchasing limit. That particular one was written broad because that cost is actually more than 50,000. That particular one was written broad because that cost is actually more than $50,000.
And as a safeguard, at some point, if we're starting to get outside of budgeted numbers, hopefully Russ is going to raise his hand and go-
Yeah.
These have to be in the budget in order for them to be, so the appropriation, we couldn't even issue a PO if it's outside the budget and outside the authority.
Without it coming back to us.
Yeah. We've got to bring that back.
As far as the contract, does Bryce look at the contracts too, or would it just be you? So he would?
Yeah, I'll send them all to legal before-
So that's the safeguard there?
Yeah, in terms of the legal language, he'll look at them, although he'll tell you he's not a numbers guy.
Well, I'm not a numbers guy, but I do look at the language very hard and cross out a lot of language and add back language. We've never had a contract come back, you know, 39 years, I mean, where there was a bad provision that hasn't happened.
I make a motion to approve changes to section 1.4A of the purchasing manual.
I'd second that.
Okay, any other discussion? Time of roll call.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarm?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
For them?
Yes. Item number 11. Consider approval ordinance number 2025-08 of the City Council of the City of Perry, Oklahoma, amending chapter 18 of the Perry Municipal Code 2022 entitled Fee Schedule by the Amendment of Section 11-400 entitled Swimming Pool Fees, providing for season passes and increase in private party rates depending on number of guests at the Perry Municipal Pool, providing for repealer, savings code of conservability, and will we be able to clear an emergency? Not today.
Oh, yeah.
Just fill one seat so we can-
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have seven?
And declaring an emergency.
This will affect it immediately.
And our Parks and Recreation Director is going to speak to this one. She did a little bit of background research, if you guys have any questions.
Hello, Parks and Recreation Department Head?
Guess I was just going to hang out.
You're on TV.
So right now, we don't offer annual pool passes, and I know in the history that we've had some people ask about annual pool passes, so I thought, what better time than 2025 to offer that? So with some research of other surrounding pools, Tennessee, Tonka Wad, what they offer, granted, their pools are a little more extravagant than ours, but I'm thinking like 60 bucks for 17 and years and younger annual pool pass, and then 18 years and older would be 70. So that's something we currently, like I said, we don't currently offer that right now. Pool parties, I don't know that it's ever been changed or even evaluated or looked at as far as what it costs for a pool party, because you have to have a certain amount of lifeguards, I'm sure Shay can speak on this. Right now, I, what is it, they're $75 for any amount. After researching, I think 50 guests and less would be 125, and then 51 and over would be 175, and they would be required to put in a down a $50 deposit, even if they cancel, you know? And pool hours or party days would be like Wednesdays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And I think in the ordinance, they can only stay open no later than 8:30. I think they'd shut them down at 8:00 to give the lifeguards time to shut down the pool and all that, so.
So on the 51 or more, is there a pool maximum?
There is. Her daughter just texted me the other day.
It's okay, I just think the-
I want to say it's like 150. The occupancy, yeah. I want to say it's 150, because she asked. That person that knows the answer can't tell you that right now.
Because if it is 150, that's a big jump for only $25 more.
Yep.
Have we ever had that, really?
No. What, 50 people or more?
No, 150.
I don't think so. I don't think we've reached capacity. I think we pushed kind of close with end of the year pool party last year. I don't know what the attendance was that day, but it was good. Heard it was pretty awesome.
So for that fee, you get the pool and three lifeguards? Is there anything else included in that, or?
Well, if you, no, I mean, we'd have concession available. I think they allow them to bring in cakes or hot dogs or whatever they want on a normal basis. We wouldn't allow them to bring their food in.
Do in, okay.
On the, so on the season passes, those are all per person, not like per family or something like that?
Yes, that's what I figured for, just per person.
Gotcha. So like, for like my family, it would be like 320 bucks?
No, I think we could re, I would, I don't know, if we could reconfigure that for sure what a family-
Right, right, because where I have like three kids and then two adults.
I think there'd be a family rate. I didn't think about family rates.
It's a good idea.
Dang it.
Because otherwise, I might, if someone has like six kids or something, they're going to spend a lot on a season pass.
And I guess my question to you is, what is our goal with this? Is it to try to increase?
Right, right.
Increase people and then just make it easier, so, you know, send a kid for 20 bucks?
I think the family thing would be an ideal, because I mean, that's right, it needs to be a big number. But my other question is, is if I pay the $60, how many times would my kid have to attend before I start to really win?
Well, if you figure, because we figured, I figured it, there's $3 a day for 18 or 17 and under, and we're open for 12 weeks, and that came out to, I don't know, like 125 some dollars, I don't know, without doing the math, so. Then I have, you know, you have to factor in, we got to make sure it's something that, when you break it down, like 125 versus 60, of course, I'm going to go with the 60 bucks and I'm going to save money. But weather, there are days that we have to close because of the weather, or something happens in the pool with a kid, or-
So 20 times, they just go 20 times.
Yeah, yeah, salespeople are going to be, they're going to be there at least 20 times it pays, or 21 if it's a thing.
They don't get a family rate now that-
That'd be twice a week.
And we're open 12 weeks. And the only day we're not open is Mondays, so.
So you can go six days a week? So they could go six days a week and swim every night?
This last year, we had the Y kind of manage it for us, are we doing that again?
Yep.
Okay. But, so if you're a Y member, you get in? So this is for those that are not Y members?
Right.
A family member, like you have to have a family membership, is my understanding, not, not just like individual, because-
You have to have a YMCA family membership, not just an individual membership.
Right.
Patty, I think that, I love the idea of the pass, like it would be much easier to manage. I will also say that when parents send kids $20 and it costs three, they're spending 17 in concession.
Which is great. I mean, I'm planning on adding more concessions this year, and pool's getting painted this year, so that's exciting.
I also think you could get more from the parties without the people are paying around this area.
And I thought that, but-
Well, you said it was 75 right now.
It's not like-
Right, that's a big jump.
Yeah, just 75.
I mean, even last year in the past, like at the hotel, we did 100 bucks on people. We're fine with that. I mean, for the city pool, that's a lot bigger, and outdoor, you do a lot more, you probably could get more.
Yeah, Patty has a really soft heart, don't talk to her about getting, she's-
I argue with them.
My dance director for a reason.
I argue with them. I'm not trying to price gouge, I mean, if the pool doesn't start to make money, then-
I think that's reasonable.
Hammered into my head for years.
Well, I'm a big believer in baby steps. This is a nice big step in the right direction.
I don't think people would blanket that 125.
I would hope so.
I think people would take it, yeah.
I mean, those spend, that was sexy.
Right, absolutely.
And if you have the concessions open too, they're going to spend more, so that's great.
And we're adding more to it this year, so.
That would maybe just, yeah, kind of, you said, just maybe think about the family.
Yeah, and that's my bad, because I don't have kids, I don't think past, me and the old man, so.
So Tonka Wad's family is, family of four season passes, 150. Must be in the same household.
How do you feel about that?
I'm great with that. I think that's better than 300.
Yeah.
So they would just, when they sign up for it, they would just list their names, and then when they come check in, that way you know they're the same.
Perfect. Things nice.
So if we wanted to approve this tonight, we would amend it to include the family pass for 150?
Yeah, that'd be ideal.
A four?
Yeah, so we could just move forward instead of bringing it back.
Yeah, would that be limited to four, or?
Family of five, family of four?
Or just?
I'm thinking family.
I didn't think through that far.
That's the thing, is it was that limited at four, right?
It was limited at four, yeah.
Or just, so, two kids and two parents?
I'm thinking we just-
One parent, three kids.
Same family.
I can't think my dad would have gone to the pool.
Let's try family this year. If it's six kids, it's six kids, and then if it doesn't work out, we revisit.
Is there a way to specify nuclear family or whatever it's called?
Yeah, just say we eight family members, or, and then we can make an exception.
No Coldarm cousins or anything showing up.
Because they do have sparring cousins.
It's a good deal. And that's how we do angling, angles for, for, for angling fishing, you know? Anybody within your household.
Right.
It's covered, only family fishing or whatever, so.
I like Derek's idea, just try it, just make a blanket family, as long as you're in the same household.
Sounds like we have a motion that's- Just not said.
I make a motion that we approve item 11 with the amendment of the family pass.
For 150?
150.
150.
In the same household.
In the same household.
I'll second.
Thanks.
All right, let's have roll call.
Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarm?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
For them?
Yes.
Sorry, I don't understand.
Scared too.
Thank you. See you later, Patty.
Thanks.
Bye, Patty.
Bye, Pam. Bye, Pam. Brian, you're stuck with us.
Motion to approve the emergency, or, or wait.
Yeah, so I have to consider approval of the emergency clause for ordinance number 2025-08. We have both second.
And Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
For them?
Yes. I have 13, any new business?
Brian?
Hey, Lawrence, before we go, I just want to say, Nate, that this kind of annual or semi-annual analysis of what we're doing and what we're charging is what I'd love to see from every department head. I mean, that's what we're, that's why they're there, that's why we need them to be a bigger part of this. I mean, they showed our strategic plan, it's just squares until we get the department heads to start putting in the specifics, so I applaud this.
A lot of Patty, now you said that. In fact, I, when I first started, within the first two weeks, I started a fee schedule for all departments, and then have just got swamped down with so many other things. But we have two management interns who have applied to the position, and that's one of the list items I have for them, is to go around to each department and work out a fee schedule.
That's good. Yeah, kind of going along with that, like when we've had the airport come out, that was a lightning, and I enjoyed hearing the ideas that we had and the things that they were doing, and then it got us educated. When I've had people come and talk to me about, why is the city doing so-and-so with the airport? I've been able to answer those questions, say, well, this is what we're doing, this is-
And I guess I'm even thinking things other than just fee schedules. What is that strategic plan when we don't have extra dollars to go fix a street? Do we have a pothole schedule? Or, I'm making this up, but I mean, I would love to know that we have a, we have this big strategic plan, and then we've got an annual plan that's tied to that for me, should be ahead, and let them present it to us.
I love the idea.
Sorry, Lawrence?
No, no, that's good. All right, no new business?
Actually, I just have one thing. Laura Bomer said that she forgot to mention that May 5th is Capitol Day, and all of us are invited to go, if anybody would like to attend.
Oh, the Main Street Capitol Day?
Yeah, where they set up in the rotunda.
Yeah, it's May 5th.
Yeah, she forgot to add that. I'm like, what, you forgot something? We had so much information. I think it's all day, like 10 to 2, or 8 to 2, or something like that.
That's right, they try and catch them like during lunch.
They have a city council that day. Yeah, I think you went, you and I went here.
I went.
Did you go too?
Yeah.
We have a city council that day. Yeah, May 5th Capitol Day.
It's kind of a all-day, early afternoon.
So, so if some of the group is passionate about going to that, Nate, could we, is it early enough that we could modify that May 5th date for the council meeting?
We can, yeah, we could absolutely modify it.
We'd be advised before.
But if it's a full, you know, if you're-
Yeah.
To make it later, is that-
Well, or even the, you know, there's been days where it was a holiday on Monday or something, and we moved it or something. Could we move it to a Tuesday or something? I'm not saying we have to, I'm just saying that if it appears on that day that there was enough demand and-
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to, we have to decide pretty quick so that we can prep and get staff and council to it, so just let me know if that's what you want to do.
I will say Perry was well represented last year, and they, and she, they were all grateful for it, so, not sure who wants to go, but.
So who wants to move the meeting?
We really can't talk about that. It's not on the agenda.
Well, it's new business. It was new business.
It doesn't constitute new business.
I can ask after.
And that's, that is the next meeting?
Yes.
I see your sense of urgency.
Well, it may not pay a bit, it may be a work, we decide to go, we just make doggone sure we get back.
All right. Item 14. Consider convening into executive session for the purpose of, one, performance review of city manager Nate Reed pursuant to title 25, section 307b.4 of the Oklahoma statutes as amended, and, two, purchase of real property located in the northeast quarter of section 18, township 21 north, range 1 west of the Indian Meridian, and the southeast of section 18, township 21 north, range 1 west of the Indian Meridian pursuant to title 25, section 307b.3 of the Oklahoma statutes as amended.
Right to test. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Coldarm?
Yes.
Russ?
Yes.
Rocha?
Yes.
For them?
Yes.
And it was short and sweet.
You didn't even mention on the PowerPoint that you got us all new chairs. That's huge in my book.
That was you.
Make a motion to reconvene for an excessive second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reconvene.
Okay, and Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, we don't have any action to take on the items we've discussed. So item seventeen, adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, let's call our meeting to order for the perimunicipal authority and have roll call.
Copy. Bledsoe.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Calderon.
Present.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams. Boucher.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. We've got quorum. Item one, consent agenda.
Boucher to approve.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Item five, motion to consider agenda item previously tabled and consider approval of an amendment to section 1.4a of the Perry Purchasing Manual providing for an authority of the trust manager to make purchases, contracts, leases, payments, and to perform other actions within designated spending limits.
Boucher to approve.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. Any new business? Consent and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes. All right, let's call our meeting to order for the Perry Facilities Authority and have roll call.
Copy. Bledsoe.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Calderon.
Here.
Rupp.
Here.
Williams. Boucher.
Here.
Worthy.
Here. We've got quorum. Item one, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Williams. Don't ask me, say Williams, Worthy.
Yes. Item five, any new business? Nope. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And Bledsoe.
Yes.
Marshall.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Calderon.
Yes.
Rupp.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Worthy.
Yes.